All right, it being 7 o'clock on April 8, 2021, the Town of Abington zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 8, 2021 at 7:00 PM at Abington Town Hall, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington. First order of business is old and new business, the approval of the March 11, 2021 minutes.
Will they be approved?
A second there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes approved. I mentioned to, I was mentioning to Nancy before everyone came in that the first order of business for next month, because there's a town election in between our next hearing, will have to be reorganization of the board. All right, so we'll add that. All right, it being after 7:00 PM, petition of Leon and Sharon Bombardier, 131 Lincoln Street. Please chair, would you like to read the petition?
The Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 8, 2021 at 7:00 PM at the Abington Town Hall, 500 Glenwood Way, on the petition of Leon and Sharon Bombardier, 131 Lincoln Street, Abington, for a side yard variance under 175-29 to construct an addition at 131 Lincoln Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 52, Lot 180, in the R30 zone. Andrew Leveralt, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals.
All right, with the petition, I'd like to come forward. You can just grab a seat or use the, use the microphone?
Yeah.
Dr. Leon Bombardier.
Do you want to just give us a description of what you're proposing?
Yeah, I originally built the house in 1972 when the, I was zoned R20 and I had a 15-yard side yard setback. So I started planning to do this addition and I hired a surveyor, so I knew where the lot line was, because I'm right on the lot line. And we got talking and I was telling him about the 15-feet side yard setback and he goes, I think it's 20. So sure enough, somewhere in the last 50 years, I went from R20 zone to an R30 zone. So now I've got a 20-foot side yard setback. And the addition really doesn't work if I have to go 20 feet off the lot line.
Well, I have some good news for you. The building inspector has let us know that you've applied for a variance, but as it stands right now, so as you mentioned there, the current side yard setback is 20 feet. But your lot line or your house at the corner there is only 14 feet. So you're actually non-conforming right now. So it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, which means that you don't technically need a variance, you just need us to make a finding, which is a lesser burden for you to establish that you meet those requirements. So essentially, we're just looking at whether the change, extension, or alteration will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. All right, if you had actually needed a variance, there are additional statutory requirements that you need to meet, you know, based upon the shape of the land and certain other issues. So that's the good news for you. The slightly bad news, and it's not necessarily bad news, is that the building inspector let us know that the plot plan that you presented is not certified, so it cannot be accepted for a building permit application.
Well, I do have one with me.
Okay. I mean, this doesn't impact necessarily your application, but if you were to move forward and submit this for...
Yeah, I can leave this with you.
Is that a certified copy? Okay. If that's your only copy, you might want to hold on to that for the building inspector. So I think that's, I think that's the issue, that aren't they supposed to have a certification on them, correct? From the engineer? Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking down here.
The one he just gave you.
Okay. All right. You're going to need that for the building inspector if we grant the...
You don't have an extra one.
Do you have, do you have more of these? Okay, okay.
With the stamp on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
This one doesn't show the alteration though.
Oh, right. So you'll have to do the... Yeah, so you'd have to have him certify, copy that, actually shows where the new building would be.
Do you want a copy of that, or should I do that just for the current building?
I think you probably just want to, yeah, just hold on to it. I don't want to start taking documents from you, because you might need it for the building department.
So you want me to bring you a certified copy?
You'd need one with your application for the building department, but not for the zoning.
Not for us, just the building department.
Okay, so I'm all set?
Not yet. We've got a couple more things.
We have to do a finding.
What's that?
We still have work to do.
Can you just explain a little bit about what you're doing, as far as the addition goes?
Oh, yeah, it's a 14 by 19 addition, lots of bedrooms. We're going to put a handicap bathroom in and laundry and a little bit of storage.
And in terms of the actual, the actual addition itself, I'm assuming that it's going to be, you know, oh, I'm sorry, can you go back to, just so people can hear you?
Yeah.
It's being televised. I'm assuming that the height of the addition is going to be in keeping with the rest of the house, it's not going to be, you know, anything enormous, or it's going to be...
It's going to be the extension of the, the existing...
The existing ranch, so it's the extension of that. Okay. Anyone else on the board? I mean, this is kind of unrelated to the issue that we're here on, but I think that shed's probably supposed to come in off the property line. You usually need some type of setback for accessory structures like that, but...
I never knew where that lot line was. I thought it was five feet on the lot line.
Before they changed.
Before they changed.
Depends, yeah. I don't have any questions.
I have no further questions.
Is anybody in the audience on this petition? Somebody want to speak to this?
There's one.
Yeah.
Any of you are butters have any problem with this? Any of you are butters, any of them living around you have a problem with, any of your neighbors who have butted your property?
Nobody's mentioned it, huh?
Mostly the George Fulyas, who butts that side of the...
I've talked to him, I was trying to buy a piece of land off him, but that didn't work out.
Okay.
So he knows about it. He wanted to rent me a strip of land and I said, well, that doesn't really do much.
Right, doesn't help you, no?
No.
No, I have nothing else, thank you.
No, I mean, given the sort of, the nature of the line, the lot line itself, it's obviously coming at a bit of an angle, or it looks like, is the lot line at an angle, or is the house at an angle? It's kind of...
No, the lot line is.
The lot line's at an angle, yeah. So I mean, as we said, you're currently non-conforming as it stands now, you're 14 feet, 14.6 feet at that corner. You're going to keep with that, but then because of the angle of the lot line, you're going to be dropping it down two feet, so you're going to be, you know, obviously extending the non-conforming use, but I don't see that as in any way being...
Substantially detrimental to anything.
I don't see it hurting his neighbor either.
Yeah. I mean, given that, I'd be inclined to grant the petition.
So I would make a motion...
Do you want to read it again?
On the petition of Leon and Sharon Bombardier, 131 Lincoln Street, Abington, that we issue a finding that the extension alteration as proposed in the plan is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
I guess I should ask a procedural question, are we going to be denying the variance, but instead granting a finding?
If legally? Because the petition was for a variance.
It was for a variance, yeah.
You want to vote that too?
We have to do that.
Well, you know what, we wouldn't want to, let's say something goes bad and we, if we deny the variance and he's going to have to alter his plans.
So I think it would just...
So, why don't you, what if we here withdraws the petition for the variance and we just vote on the finding?
That's fine.
So if we were to deny your petition for a variance, which you don't technically need, if for some reason the bank said you actually do need a variance, they misinterpreted this, because we've denied it, you'd be precluded from re-entering for a two-year period unless you showed some substantial alteration. So if you could just withdraw your petition for the variance, we'll move forward and grant the finding. So would you like to withdraw?
I withdraw the petition for the variance.
Make a motion to accept his withdrawal.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we've accepted that, so...
Yeah, and then my motion would stand as far as granting the finding.
And I'll second that, his finding.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you are all set, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, next up is Mento Corp. It being after 7:05 PM, go ahead. You can read it. Being after 7:05 PM, the Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 8, 2021 at Abington Town Hall, 500 Glenwood Way at 7:05 PM, on the petition of Mento Corp., 1157 Washington Street Braintree for a special permit under 175-21A2 to construct a two-family residential dwelling at 154 Brockton Avenue. The property is located on Assessors Map 15, Lot 52, in the HC zone.
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you. Nice to be somewhere live these days. My name is Kevin Riley, I'm an attorney based in Randolph, here on behalf of the applicant Mento Corporation. Gentleman over here, Mr. Pat Burke, is also here from Mento Corp. to help me with any questions that you might have. Before I start, I'll just give you a quick...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As the chairman just indicated, this is a request for a special permit on 154 Brockton Avenue, Route 123, as is allowed under 125, excuse me, 175-21 of your bylaws. So we would be looking to have the applicant construct a two-family dwelling with associated parking on what is approximately a 24,000 square foot lot. I've given you a photo of what we have there right now, as you can see, as it's improved, it consists of about a 1,900 vintage house with a single-story attached unit. That unit is classified as utility storage in the town's records, but it appears at least at one time that it seems to have housed a photography shop. It also contains, the site also contains a single car garage. And as you can see from the plan, the house as existing is in pretty close proximity to the street. And I would probably say that you could classify all of the buildings on site as below average in their condition. If you know the property, it's located in an area of mixed development, I think. There are single-family homes, apartment buildings, homes that have been converted to business use, retail office space, and street commercial uses immediately around it and across the street. The applicant would propose to raise both of the buildings and to redevelop it with a single, two-family dwelling with each living unit having two bedrooms. The new dwelling would, as you can see on the plans again, be more centrally located on the property, be away from the street, would allow the applicant to meet all of the dimensional setbacks and provide required parking. There would be a new water and sewer connection provided as per the DPW standards. Just to give you an idea, I would have one importantly, an idea of what we should be looking at, a colonial-style two-family dwelling, there's an elevation to that. So I'd suggest, you know, in the scheme of things, that, you know, the proposed development would result certainly in a significant improvement to the premises, and would be consistent with your intent and purpose of the zoning bylaws, and ask for your support in granting the application for the special permit. Happy to take any questions that you may have.
It's going to be an upstairs and downstairs type of a situation?
Yes.
Apartment or condo or...
For right now, it would be duplex home, so two separate living units, but not condo.
So what is the, you have section 175-21A double I?
Yes.
Is that...
It's, that is the section of the...
One-two family or one duplex dwelling on a...
Exactly right.
Okay.
It's in the back of the 175.
Yeah, that's 175-21A, oh, two, gotcha. I'm looking for a double I, I'm like, where can I find a double I, okay. All right. And then the building inspector let us know that, or excuse me, the building department let us know that there's a typo on the proposed plot plan, house is number 1554?
I did notice that, actually, yeah, that appeared on that, on that plan, we could certainly have that corrected as necessary, but sure, it is 154, obviously. Engineer threw an additional five in there.
And then also, you would need a waiver of the environmental impact statement under 175-35. I'm assuming this is in, is this in the floodplain?
There is a small piece that, you know, is a, is a wetlands area.
Oh, yeah, right down the bottom there?
Right, on the, I think it's the eastern, western side. It is not, no construction is in that area and really not in any proximity to that area.
And you have erosion control barrier that's going there?
Yes.
Have you gone through the conservation process?
They are, they're in the process of doing that, yes.
Okay. And you have, how many, how many bedrooms in each unit?
Two.
So you have the required parking spaces, right? Yep.
Yeah, four plus two, two plus, two plus one on each, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I certainly think from the, oh, this is the, currently, is this like a darkroom or something, what's assigned there?
That's the darkroom supplies, yes.
Yep, yep, yep.
Multiple things.
That was my assumption as to why it was a photography shop, I don't know otherwise.
There was a few things in there.
There's a camera shop in the eighties.
Gotcha, gotcha, all right.
I was going to say, from developing.
I certainly think from the Asbills that that, the structure you're proposing is going to, you know, be more aesthetically pleasing than what's currently there.
Yeah, and I think it fits within the neighborhood as far as other multi-family uses.
I mean, exactly, yeah, I mean, Brockton Ave. doesn't necessarily have a defined character, especially...
There's more than actually parking also.
Yeah. I don't have anything else, anybody here on this petition? If you could just come up to the microphone and just state your name and your address?
Okay.
It's going to be a first for everyone, don't worry.
Thank you.
Could I also see a copy of one of those you brought up?
The Asbills? Sure. Oh, here it is.
I'm at the side and she's behind.
Okay.
Nice to meet you. Kelly residing at 95 Nile Street in Abington. So we just had a couple of questions about the residence that's going in. We were wondering about where you're planning to put the foundation on the lot, how close it would be to the property line.
So we have, I mean, you can take a look at the plans if you want, or if the petitioner sort of wants to walk her...
It's right here, if you want, look at it.
You got it.
Thank you.
Of course, of course.
Thank you.
So just to show you, here's where the building is currently.
Yep.
Okay, here's where it would be proposed to go, so we move that way.
Oh, okay, and that's our fence.
Sure.
And then 60 Elm Street, yeah.
60 Elm.
So it goes back here now and it's more over near.
It's more centered.
For parking. Okay, so that's...
How far will that be from my lot line, do you know?
33, almost 34 feet.
The only thing I'm going to be honest with you is I do not like this at all. I feel like that's going to take away a lot of my privacy in my backyard, I don't care at all.
That was actually a question that we had.
Sure, too, it's going to be more for you.
We were wondering, you know, two-story, and we were wondering if you were planning to put a deck on the second story, because that will be so close to our land, so really kind of, you know, taking away the privacy that we have now with the distance and now having two neighbors looking into our yard.
So it's going to be higher than the existing structure?
Yeah, it's a single-family now, this is a large two-family with a deck...
With a deck on the second.
Right in our yards.
And a deck in the middle overlooking and closer to our fence.
So are you behind, you said?
Correct.
You're directly behind?
So our backyard, our, looks right into that deck.
Ms. Kelly is here and, sure.
Ms. Contois.
Okay.
That's what we were just wondering about decking off the back and if there was any plans for privacy, like privacy trees or something to...
He had to my lot line, but more, and then there's this two-story deck that they wanted to put up back, it's going to be right in our...
Is there trees now between your...
Yeah.
So there's brush right, there's brush right now, which they'll have to clear, so it will be a clear shot.
It's just going to be, to me, very towering, overwhelming.
So are those trees...
So it's just brush right now between our yard and theirs, there is trees between hers.
This is, this is dense brush, all of here, so this would have to be cleared out.
So we were just wondering about if you were going to have a deck and what kind of privacy you're going to create.
As far as we know, there's a stream, it goes all the way up to one side. As far as we know, it's stream right now, and right now, it's close all on the brush.
Gotcha.
So that was our major concern.
No, I just want to have everything on the record if you, so we're just kind of going in an orderly fashion, so we know what everybody's concerns are. No, that's okay, no, I mean...
So our concerns were just about how many stories and if there is going to be any decking off the second story, which it looks like they do plan to have. And if so, since they're moving the foundation closer and plan to have a second deck, plans for privacy, so that way, you know, we're not kind of changing our backyard into a fishbowl with so many persons looking in on us.
Have you had any conversations with the neighbor about possible mitigation, you know, fencing or...
I was, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things, you know, it's certainly work to make the neighbor happy in whatever way we can. I can say with regard to, I believe this is a vegetated area already, certainly we would leave anything in the way of significant trees or anything like that that are there.
There are none.
Certainly add to that.
It's all scrub brush.
There are none, it's just...
So we could certainly agree to put some, you know, some trees in over in this area here. We can certainly agree that with regard to the deck, we can put up some privacy panels so that, you know, that's not a situation where people are necessarily, you know, in view with everybody.
Thank you, that was just a main concern, is being so close to our house and then just having so many people looking into our backyard, so it's, that's where we hang out most of the time, so it's a big concern to have so many families so close on our backyard.
And so I guess, I guess my question would be, do you think it would make sense if you guys maybe could get together within the next month, sort of come up with what you think a good resolution would be, and then come back and we can, you know, revisit it with maybe some conditions that satisfy everybody? If that works for your timeframe?
I mean, if what I've suggested is acceptable, I mean, we certainly agree to that, if there are other suggestions, I'm certainly happy to entertain them. Again, I think, you know, we've got...
Maybe if we can maybe get a better idea of what sort of privacy it's in, if you feel on the deck, rather than the same...
It's going to be...
You know, sort of standard...
I think so.
Did you have any plans for a fence on that backside where it runs onto my lot, the big block there?
Or a fence on your side, because it's just a black, we just put a black chain link up. Just looking for more privacy between the two spaces, since they're going to be moving the house so close to the property line, away from the street, obviously to make room for parking and...
Yeah, maybe you could do that, maybe, I mean, even if something over Zoom, or, you know, you know, just kind of hash it out and come up with some general ideas about what reasonable conditions that you can all agree to, and we'll take a look at it next month.
Yeah, I mean, you'd certainly be welcome to come into our backyard and you can help with, you know, maybe get a better idea of, you know...
That they broke out?
Yeah, we're, yeah, just, I'm so sorry.
It's easier to see what we're talking with.
And, you know, again, maybe the thing that could also be done is you could have a little bit better sense, I mean, and ensure that they could sort of stand or place something where that, those house corners would be, so that you would...
Right. That would be helpful.
Yeah. Because, I mean, we do have, you know, 30 feet to the one lot line, and I don't know how far it is to the corner, exactly where your house is located on your lot, but obviously I think it's certainly not a minimal distance closer than it is now bringing.
So just looking to create some privacy there, just making sure that that's asked for in this setting.
Also, I think Shannon would agree, we know each other pretty well, and I don't want it to expedite, you know, your process of moving forward, I'd be willing to be tomorrow, like, or whatever's being given to you, just not hold you up.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, we don't, we don't want to hold you up at all, we just want to make sure that there's just an understanding on that. But besides that, we're looking forward to it, we think it'd be great for the neighborhood.
It would be nice to have a better place.
Yeah, right, yes. We're going to get it approved and all that, it's hot, it's nice to get it approved and then we will work out.
That's, I was going to say, that's as long as...
If that's possible.
I prefer to have you guys come back with some conditions that you've agreed to at our next meeting, just so everybody knows.
Well, could I suggest, Mr. Burmind, you just, an agreement that we would get together with the owners of the two properties within the next couple of weeks, or tomorrow, or whenever, and that, you know, we would go through that process with them, and then get a lobby.
But we need the conditions to include in the special permit, so. I know it's another month, but, you know, I would feel more comfortable that way, as opposed to...
Just so there's no misunderstandings about, you know, something happens on the road, it's in there.
Do they need the waiver if they're going to go to conservation?
I think they'd still need a waiver.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah. I think we still have to grant the waiver under 35, because conservation, I don't think, yeah, can't grant a waiver, yeah.
Those are the only questions that I have is...
I know it's going to delay you a little bit, but I think it would be better for everybody if you had a chance to, like you said, Attorney Riley, stake it out so they can see where it's going to be, and I think that would be...
We're going to get it approved, we will work with them, I mean, we've got a month to less, is a lot of time.
Sure. I was thinking...
To be honest.
But you're still, you're still...
If you're okay with it, are you guys okay with, we've got a good reputation.
But you still have to go through the conservation, so that's not, when is that happening?
I am not certain of the date, I know there has been a, I believe there has been a filing.
So that's, you're not going to get anything done until that's done anyway, so...
Yeah, you're going to need the order of permission, yeah, so...
So... When is your next meeting?
May 13th.
May 13th, yeah.
What is that, what, what, you know, the date for that? Uh, not that I would...
What's conservation meet, do we know?
Probably to at the end of April.
End of April.
End of April.
If they, they can call me tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
No, 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 that's all, no, we're fine, we can, we can do this process, don't worry about it, all right? We'll wait, Abby.
All right. Um, so, uh, the petition will agree to continuance until the May 13 hearing?
May 13th.
May 13th.
And do we, okay, do we wanna simply report back that we have reached agreement with the, uh?
If you just.
Sort of a list of.
Yeah, whatever the conditions you've agreed to and will grant the special, I mean, you know, I'm assuming that will.
If there's any change, if you make any changes on the plan, obviously change, you know, bring us a new plan or updated plan or whatever.
But they still have to file for the waiver, so that means they have to advertise and.
I don't know that they'll necessarily need to file for the waiver because that's in, essentially is assumed within the petition, right? I mean.
I don't know if it is, they didn't request it, so not to reel up the speed on that.
Um, they could, they could get it by next month though, correct?
Pardon?
They could advertise and have it on the docket for next month, right? The waiver?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so maybe you, you might wanna close the loop with the building department on that too, and just verify whether or not you actually need to apply, uh, you need to apply for the waiver, and if you do, you might wanna file so that it can be heard next month at the same time as year.
At the same time.
Okay, so that way everything can be, yeah.
A waiver of environmental impact statement that.
And if, when would that have to be submitted by, for your publications and so forth?
Uh, I should know by, like, the 20th.
Then we can do it all together.
All right, so do we have a motion to?
Motion to continue this until?
May 13th.
May 13th.
May 13th.
At 7 o'clock?
All right, I'll second.
Who's in favor? All right, gentlemen, we'll see you back here next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good.
Nancy, do you want these?
No, 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 you're fine, you're fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we see after 7:10 PM, the Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April 8, 2021, at 7:10 PM at the Abington Town Hall, 500 Goldenwood Way, on the petition of N H Signs, Peter March, agent for R A and R I Realty LLC, 66 Gold ledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire, for a waiver under 175-58.3 for signage to be placed on three sides of the exist, existing fuel canopy at 164 North Avenue, the property is located on South S M F 55, Lot 148 in the CBD. Petitioner like to come up?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good luck. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Peter March, New Hampshire Signs, 66 Gold ledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire. Um, we're applying for a waiver to add lit graphics, channel letters and down lighting to a gas canopy at 164 North Ave in Abington. I've created, prepared a fairly extensive document, which I'm sure you have in front of you, I might try to abbreviate that, you know, given the, I see that things tend to move along a bit. Um, so the site is an existing gas station, comprised of a gas station with three dispensers, it's not four dispensers, it's, uh, three. It's on CBD. Um, we've applied for a permit to reface the ground sign, which was approved, um, and to apply to brand the canopy as Sitco, and this was denied, hence our appearance in front of the board. So what we wanna do essentially is to add two Sitco signs on the short side of the canopy, Harrison North, and one on the Adams side with a TriMark, a TriMark is a triangular, uh, logo, uh, Sitco logo. Um, we're requesting the signs be internally illuminated. Basically, the total size of the signage is 50 square feet. Um, obviously, we want to add Sitco graphics to the canopy as well, and we'd like to add a light bar to the top of the canopy. The Sitco graphics comprise a background of either red or silver and have a geometric pattern over about 20% of the canopy. The light bar is a metal channel about three inches deep, open on the bottom only, is designed to project a gentle light onto the canopy fascia and to light the drip edge of the pavement below the canopy. Uh, that's an area that, uh, that creates ice, and one of the reasons is to, uh, is to light that area of the canopy. To the points relevant to the board, literal enforcement of the provisions of the sign law would, uh, involve hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant. Gas, visibility is a key, is key to a gas station, any gas station. It's unique in that it caters to a lot of short-term customers, people that appear on the gas station, exit their vehicles, uh, fill with gas, and then after a minute or two, drive off. Um, for some, price is a motivating factor, the others, in other cases, brand is the key. Uh, signage and lighting is key to the success of this brand, as, as they are to all brands. Um, I quote a report that basically shows the, um, the efficacy and the efficiency of lighted signs and how they improve traffic safety. That obviously is a busy intersection with cars coming at, at it from four different directions, and even the most modest lighting on signage increases driver reaction time significantly, and that consequently improves driver safety. Brand is increasingly important to customers of gas stations. In the last number of years, affinity cards, the mobile cards, Sitco cards, that are tied into a, into a, another benefit, maybe airline miles or shorts points, are more and more important, and the better rewards attract people towards individual brands. Um, that motivates people that have those cards to look at, look for these particular sites. So in the case of Sitco, Sitco, uh, issues cards that have points and rewards that offer money off a gallon of gas, and that motivates people to look for those brands, and that is an increasingly important part of, uh, branding in the petroleum industry. The strong brand presence of Sitco is the reason the site is converting from unbranded to a branded site. Experience shows that although the costs of running a branded site are greater, the brand, especially Sitco, improves the chances of success. There is another benefit to branding sites, and that is that the brand itself is rigorous at maintaining, uh, the quality of the, of the facility. Lighting needs to be kept up, trash needs to be kept up, uh, the extraneous signs that you see on a lot of unbranded stations basically are taken away, and the Sitco in particular has a mystery shopper that appears at least every quarter and files a report. Uh, if the brand is not kept up to standard, there are punitive results to the brand owner or to the station owner. So there's a benefit to branding sites, uh, and keeping them, you know, in the, in the brand, particularly to, you know, areas like Abington. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment, but the purpose of the law is to obviously assure that signs are appropriate, um, and be protected of land values without unduly restricting the conduct of lawful enterprise. This site is an existing site, uh, for, for the most part, it's boarded by commercial businesses and institutions such as the adjacent church and bank. Signage will have little or no effect on neighbors. Uh, Adams Place is oblique to the site and a limited aspect of the station that is in view of residents is shielded by trees and vegetation. The total surface area of the canopy is approximately 4,000 square feet, um, and the Sitco letters represent about 1% of that, so they're not unduly excessive. Um, the fascia graphics are widely accepted, um, there are other sites in town and other sites in, in adjacent towns that have the same sort of graphics. So the other thing that we're doing is we're implementing new dispensers, the new dispensers will go in Monday. Uh, we'll implement a new, um, ID sign, a new NETA, uh, more relevant ID sign. Site's already been pressure washed and painted, and, um, obviously, we're hoping to implement the canopy as well. Um, so it's a specific specialized use. The unique aspect to this site is that it's a gas station, generates a high volume of short frequency traffic, and cars enter, exit, uh, enter, fill, exit and leave. The intent of the code is served by the signage, um, I believe that the request is appropriate to the use and maintains, uh, improves property values of the area. Um, our request relates specifically to Sitco. If the station were to convert to another brand, for example, Snoco, a waiver would have to be requested afresh.
Okay. And is, what is the existing Abington stop and gas sign, is that coming down?
It's coming down, it's being replaced by a Sitco sign of the same size.
Okay. Okay.
But it's a NETA, more integral sign. The Abington gas sign's been hacked over the years, there's lots of different planes, and this is a, a new, uh, Sitco branded, Sitco supplied sign.
And you said the signs on the canopy are gonna be illuminated?
Yes, sir.
Are those gonna be 24 hours a day, or are those time requirements on those?
The site is, the site is a 24-hour site, so yes, we'd hope to light them while the site is open.
Okay.
During, during night hours.
Is that Abington gas sign lit inside, does that?
Yes, it is.
Is that on for 24 hours now?
It is, yes.
It is.
And there's no, like, you know, scrolling graphics or anything like that involved, it's just a static, you know, just lighted sign?
Obviously, we're talking about the canopy and the.
Yes, correct.
It's absolutely completely static, it doesn't, nothing changes.
Okay.
And no, no sign, you're not looking to, in the future, put any sign on the building itself?
No, I, I, no, this application is purely for the canopy. I have no, I, you know, I have no intention of, I have no, uh, understanding of what's gonna happen on the building. I think the general point to be raised is that, you know, when you put a branded image in, it lifts the entire area and it lifts the, the station itself, it just has a, a much more sort of clean look to it.
No, I think this will look nice, actually, I think.
Thank you.
No, I agree.
In your graphic presentation, you have a lit aside, a lit sign, and a lit sign on Adams Street with a triangle.
Yeah.
But you're not putting one on the far side of the active street of 58 at all?
We're not putting it on the building side, no, the building side's completely plain.
Okay.
That's not actually.
Is this a representative?
No, that's just a, I, obviously, it's a, that's just a generic Sitco graphic, it's just sort of a representation of what, I think it's a marketing piece that, uh, it's very difficult to, to, a graphic to.
I'm just answering questions about the signage, and, and if I understand correctly, um, these are internal lit, reflecting off the actual barrier of the.
Correct.
Of the actual cover.
Yeah, the term is, um, halo lit.
Yeah, yeah, halo, so there is no direct light coming this way, all reflective light coming off the back.
They have a facelid element to them, but.
And this is all gonna be, um, I think you said it's not gonna be neon, it's gonna be.
It's LED.
LED.
Yeah. So LED, I mean, the benefit of a, neon is not used at all anymore, it's, uh, it's highly toxic, it has very limited life, and it's very heavy on, uh, on electricity. LED is completely the opposite.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody, any other, anything else?
No.
No? All right, I'll close it to the board, open it to the floor, for the record, there is, I'm assuming there's nobody here in this petition? Nobody, okay, okay. Um, I mean, I think this is, I mean, obviously, uh, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna improve the aesthetics of that area, I mean, that's not, it's a, it's a commercial area now, so you're not talking about any really additional illumination that's not, you know, shining into somebody's house or anything like that, so, um, I don't see it as any way being detrimental. Um, and as I said, it's gonna, you know, improve the, the look of that intersection, um, and, you know, as the petitioner noted, um, you know, the brand is, is part of the, you know, is highly intertwined with the, with the station itself, so they wanna advertise that. Anything else?
I think he's about the requirements, I think, I, I think your presentation that you submitted was very well done, actually.
Thank you very much.
Made it much easier for us. So you showed there's a hardship, I, I think, in my opinion at least, um, and I think that the proposed signage is designed to be harmonious with the, the rest of the area, so I think it satisfied the requirements. I would like, if we are gonna grant it, I would like to grant it just for this one brand though, for Sitco, as, as you said, I don't want somebody else to come in there at some point in the future and think they can do the same. I think they should have to come back to us.
I, I think that's a very good, a very good choice, yeah.
So did you wanna just add that to the condition?
Once you do that in your petition, then, you know.
Yeah. I don't have, I don't have my, uh. There we go. So on the petition of N H Signs, Peter March, agent for R A and R I Realty LLC, 66 Gold ledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire, for a waiver under 175-58.3 for signage to be placed on three sides of the existing fuel canopy at 164 North Ave, I move that we grant a waiver, but that the waiver be specific to Sitco, the Sitco logo, and if , uh, another provider comes in there, that they would have to return to us to, to seek a waiver if they wanted the same type of signage.
Please second me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, petition passes, good luck, Attorney Riley.
Thank you. I'd like to say something else, the, the town staff in Abington has been absolutely fantastic, I do a lot of fair answers, and they've been nothing but, uh, helpful, I could just give them the highest compliments.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to hear.
I did it with a couple of other towns right now who are very, uh, very, very young folks.
Good dear.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Take care.
Safe travels.
Nice.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, um, anything else on the record before we adjourn?
At some point in time, are we gonna go over the new rules? Or we're just gonna adopt them?
We adopted, I actually.
Did we adopt them last week?
Yeah, we adopted them, yeah, and I, Nancy said they're going on the website soon.
Okay.
So, um, so we should be good to go. All right, well.
Before we.
Yep, go ahead.
This other packet we got from Nancy on the, um, proposed zoning changes from the planning board meeting that's coming Monday, did you have any questions?
I haven't a chance to really look at them, to be honest.
I, actually, I did. Um, I, I, it's just finding it funny that sometimes they seem to be explicitly explicit for some reason or another, I just assume it's because something's come in front of us sometime down the road and it won't become in front of us because it's bypassing us, but this is not new history, this is.
They're meeting Monday night, I'll try to take a look at it before Monday. Because we can, you can go to the planning board meeting and, and give your opinions.
Uh, and if I can get there, I'll be in Springfield, so I, I, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get back in time, that's why, that's why I'm asking the question, is I did actually take a look at them. I'm, I am getting to the point now where I could actually open the book and cite the chapter and verse and look at the quotes and say, oh, wait a second, now that's interesting, so, um, I just want, I just thought it would be helpful if, uh, anyone, anyone else besides me who has a little more experience looked at what they're proposing and had any other questions, I just, I, um, I just find, I just find them, every year when I see this, I get like, why is this, and then somewhere, four months later down the road, this number comes from, it gets approved by the planning board, I go like, oh, that's the reason why it got done that way, so, I just didn't know if anyone else had a chance to look at them, so.
Weren't we doing, like, an overhaul of all the?
I think they did that last year, right?
Did they do that? I thought we had a, they were overhauling the entire zoning, or we were having a contractor come in and sort of take a look at all our bylaws.
I thought they did.
They did that already?
The town planner, or the former town planner helped with that, and they had some planning sessions.
and it won't become in front of us because it's bypassing us, but this is not new history, this is-
They're meeting Monday night, I'll try to take a look at it before Monday. Because we can, you can go to the planning board meeting and, and give your opinions.
Uh, and if I can get there, I'll be in Springfield, so I, I, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get back in time. That's why, that's why I'm asking the question, is I did actually take a look at them. I'm, I am getting to the point now where I could actually open the book and cite the chapter and verse and look at the quotes and say, oh, wait a second now, that's interesting, so. I just want, I just thought it would be helpful if, uh, anyone, anyone else besides me who has a little more experience looked at what they're proposing and had any other questions. I just, I, um, I just find, I just find them, every year when I see this, I get like, why is this? And then somewhere, few months later down the road, this number comes from it and gets approved by the planning board, and I go like, oh, that's the reason why it got done that way, so. I just didn't know if anyone else had a chance to look at them, so.
Weren't we doing, like, an overhaul of all the?
I think they did that last year, right?
Did they do that? I thought we had a, they were overhauling the entire zoning, or we were having a contractor come in and sort of take a look at all our bylaws.
I thought they did.
They did that already?
The town planner helped, or the former town planner helped with that, and they had some planning sessions.
Dan Crane.
Oh, I missed that.
Okay, that's-
But I will take a look at those before Monday. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Yeah.
Sorry, I just, I just, I just wanted to make sure someone else's eyes besides me would have a little more knowledge base than mine has. And if I can, if we need to be there, I will try to get back in time, but I will be in Springfield on Monday at seven o'clock in the morning, and I'm there all day, so. But if I can find a way to get out early, if you think we should be there, I'll be happy to get my ass back here if I can.
Okay.
But I appreciate if somebody else will take a look at them, because I think it's important.
Yeah, it is, yes.
Because some of those, some of them seem to be, Mickey Mouse and some of them seem to be significant, so.
Are those, and I skimmed them briefly, but they seem similar to some of the, what they proposed at the special meeting, which were withdrawn at that point.
Yeah, I think they're, they're coming back because they didn't get acted on, so.
Right, that's, that's what I was bringing up, so. I appreciate it if someone else can look at them.
Yep. Yep.
I don't have the best set of eyes as far as understanding. I just question my own stupid, sometimes, my own questionability, so. But thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.